I'm standing by. All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Marion County Commissioners Board Session on Wednesday, March 2nd. It's 9:00 AM and we're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She probably would. All right, we're just gonna take a second because I know there's more people signing up for public comment and that's the next agenda item. I like that there's folks in the audience and I appreciated the heads-up emails from whoever that came from. Thank you. It's really rainy out, folks. But that means the lake's filling up.
It was over five feet in one day.
Yeah, over five feet of rain.
And it was pouring rain this morning when I left my house.
Good.
All night.
Bring all the rain.
Kinda woke me up a couple times.
Thank you, Brenda.
We need the rain.
We do. Okay. So, the first person on public comment is Andrew Davis. And if you would please join us over here at this microphone. And if you would, if you're comfortable, please take your mask off and speak directly into the microphone. And state your name and address for the record.
She told me to get close to the microphone for the people listening at home.
That's right.
Hi, my name's Andrew Davis. I live at 255 Kenwood Northeast, which is a Salem address, but it's unincorporated, Marion County. Me and many of my neighbors are here today to talk to you about the condition of our street, which is deplorable. I emailed you last evening a link to a YouTube video of what it looks like to drive up and down our street. There are 34 homes on the street. It's a dead-end street. It leads northward off of State in the Four Corners area between Lancaster Avenue and...
What's that?
Horton.
Horton, thank you. So, you've got 34 homeowners there who are paying substantial property taxes. Because it's not a county-designated road, our property taxes are going all over the county to maintain other people's roads and repave them and fix potholes and all of that sort of stuff. None of that money is going to keep our road accessible. And it's really gotten to the point where it's starting to become questionable if the road will continue to be accessible, if we'll be able to continue to get to our homes. There could potentially be pretty substantial delays if any of us needed emergency services like police, fire, ambulance. To travel down the road requires going really slow to avoid bottoming out or falling off your seat and those kinds of things. There are a substantial number of government agencies, some of them county agencies, others federal, state, what have you, that need to access our street. There are many businesses which service our homes, some of them delivery companies, contractors like landscaping, tree services, and plumbers and electricians and all of those kinds of people come up and down our streets. So, it's not just the residents who are affected. There are dozens, literally dozens, of Marion County businesses and Marion County-based government agencies that need to get to our homes. So, because it's not a county-designated road, we know that it's not just a simple matter of you saying to the road, "People, go pave the road." There needs to be some sort of decision that's collaborative between you, the county commissioners, our elected representatives, our leaders, our trusted servants, and the people who live on the road to try to collaborate and come up with a solution together. Many of us have expressed a willingness to contribute financially. If you wanted to consider creating a local taxing district that comprises our street and perhaps neighboring streets that are in a similar condition, and perhaps we pay a slightly higher property tax for a few years to fund repairs to the street. We think that would be amazing. We know that you have access at the moment to unprecedented amounts of federal and state infrastructure money that's flowing into the county. You have the discretion to devote some of that to fixing our little street and we would appreciate it if you'd give that some consideration as well. Just real briefly, if everybody from Kenwood could just stand up and be shown, I'd appreciate showing the commissioners how much support we have for this problem that we're dealing with. And before I surrender the microphone, if it's okay with you, I'd like to pass by and give each of you a copy of a letter that I've written that a bunch of my neighbors have signed.
Sure, just hand it to Legal Counsel and she'll pass it on down.
Great, thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And while he's doing that, the next on the microphone is Guadalupe. And I can't actually make out the last name. Is it Serav...
Servacio.
Servacio, perfect. So, go ahead, right over to that microphone and same song and dance. If you're comfortable, take off your mask, speak into the microphone. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Guadalupe Servacio and I live in 230 Kenwood Street. And I just come for the same reason that he is, so we are asking you to help, you can help us fix the street.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for coming. All right, Kathy Bushman. And I assume everybody that signed up has the intention of speaking, but if not, just tell me no. Okay, are these all the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning.
Not to be redundant, but whatever he just said and he's...
So, we'll still want you to come to the microphone, name and address for the record.
Kathy Bushman and I live at 250 Kenwood Street. But we've lived there since 2006, '07?
Approximately.
Yeah. But we had young children and part of the reason that, you know, we have a difficult time is like the kids can't ride their bikes on the street, they can't skateboard, they can't... There's nothing for them to do on the street other than maneuver potholes. I mean, it's really great when it rains, they can sit in a puddle, but that's about it. And then the other thing, you know, it's a safety issue. You know, school buses and stuff, the kids have to get picked up at the end of the street because the buses don't want to drive down the road because there's too many potholes. And then even like when my kids have friends over, some of them get dropped off at the end of the street because their parents don't want to ruin their cars coming down the road. And then I just feel so bad for the mailman every day because, I mean, those things are little boxes on wheels and it's just like, you know, but yeah. It's just, you know, it's a wear and tear on your vehicles. It's a safety issue for the kids. And then a lot of times when you're coming down the street, there's cars parked here, cars parked here, and then people are trying to maneuver around the potholes. And then there's children walking up and down the street to get to and from the bus in the morning or in the afternoon. And then the kids are having to either go through a puddle or wait for the car to go by so that they can get through. It's not just, there's no clear access to just safely walk up and down the street, basically. And then, you know, mostly my concern was because we had to have the fire department come to our house one time and I don't know how long it took them to get down our street, but, you know, it's scary to think if you need somebody now, they're, you know, because they need to think about themselves too and what they're doing. But it takes a while and it's not that long of a street, but it takes a while to get down it. And it would just be nice to, I mean, even a mild improvement would be great or some type of fill-in-the-hole maintenance. If there's not something we can do to have a permanent fixture, some type of upkeep would be nice. I know a lot of us have put money in and buying gravel and filling the holes, but that only lasts so long. And then there's only certain neighbors that want to contribute to that and so it comes out of some people's pockets and not other people's. And so it's just kind of, it gets a little bit wear and tear as the road is also...
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Kathy. All right, Daryl Sharp.
Good morning, Daryl.
My name's Daryl Sharp, I live at 225 Kenwood Street. Been there since 1978. I've never seen it in such horrible shape as it is now. Back in the day, we used to take care of it, but most of those people are gone now and it's hard to get cold patch. I don't, and it's expensive. It's becoming a big safety issue for my dad. He won't come and see me anymore because my street is horrible. It's hard to walk on. I can just imagine what EMS says every time they get a call to come down Kenwood Street. It's just, it's getting horrible. And I know there's other streets in Marion County that are maintained that are dead-end streets. Why not us? That's all I ask.
Thanks for coming, Daryl. Ilda Cervantes.
Hi, my name is Ilda Cervantes. I live in 220 Kenwood and I've been living there since 2013. And yeah, it's getting worse, lots of my neighbors were saying. I used to have a Nissan car, I actually had to trade it because it was ruining my car. So, now I'm trying to get a bigger car, so I kind of went newer. So, when people come and visit me, I always tell them like, just tell them a heads-up before they come to that our street is not in the great shape. And yeah, you can't go around it. During the summer, my husband had some leftover gravel, so he patched a little bit, but it only lasted a few days because everyone was trying to drive that way. So, it's like, it's almost like it's just like a temporary fix, like you just put gravel. It only lasts so long and then it goes back to how it was before. So, we hope so that we could get something fixed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Trish, Trisha Phipps and company? They can join you at the microphone if they want to?
I gave them the option.
Okay. It's a great opportunity to speak onto the TV.
Hi, I'm Trisha Phipps. I live at 265 Kenwood Avenue and we've lived there for about six years. He's five and a half. Sometimes me and my husband joke that we might not have bought that piece of property if we knew that the road was going to get considerably bad as the years progress. I would love to have a permanent fix because I feel like even the fixes that we're doing honestly makes them maybe even worse by the time all the rock or the concrete that we put in, you know, flips out of it, it just makes those holes deeper. So, I feel like a permanent fix would be the best solution and like everybody else said, great testimony to, you know, how bad it is. And hopefully we can come together and get it fixed. Do you guys want to say anything?
Are you sure?
Fix the holes.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Are they twins?
They're not. He's actually two years older.
Okay.
They're very cute.
They are.
Got her pink rain boots on.
I know, I love her rain boots. Maybe later they'll be full when she jumps in the puddles. At Julianne Stone. Yeah, okay, it's all you.
Um, my name's Julianne.
Go ahead and pull yourself close to the microphone, thank you.
I live at 260 Kenwood Street. I think my neighbors did a great example of explaining the condition of our street. I've only lived there for about two years, but I'm a medical assistant and I have to say from like a medical standpoint, there's like no safe way to get up and down our street like at all. Like if anyone had a heart attack or if anyone needed any medical care at all, it's a really sad attempt to get down our road in any fast life-saving condition, really. But other than that, I think my neighbors did a really great job. Our street isn't fixed really bad, so...
Okay. Thank you, thanks for coming. Sean Smith.
Hi, my name's Sean Smith. I also live at 260 Kenwood Street and we've lived there for almost two years now. I'm not even sure how many car parts we've had replaced as far as wheel bearings, steering knuckles, CV joints, boots, because our street's that rough. And I, I mean, we come from the country, we had a quarter-mile driveway and our driveway was better than this street. Same thing, you know, I couldn't agree more with my neighbors. Our family, some of our family members can't even visit us because it's, our street is just so rough. And we say the same thing, you know, if any emergency vehicles had to come up and down our street, it'd be a heck of a time just for them to get up and down it. And yesterday I actually talked to a Marion County deputy and the first thing he said to me coming up and down the street, I was on the phone with him, he said, "My goodness, you guys need a new street." So, it's not just us, obviously, it's the agencies, it's private companies. Everybody is being affected by it, so, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. That's the last person I have on the sign-up sheet. Is there anybody else that wants to come speak before we...
Can I add something, please?
Sure, hop right on, yeah, you'll just need to come back to the microphone, so it's on the record.
When he said he was talking to the Marion County, do I say my name again and everything?
Yes, please, just your name.
Okay, Kathy, 250 Kenwood. We, since we live at the dead-end street, there's a, where it used to be the mushroom factory. So, there is a huge field and then sort of this like leeway in the back. So, it's like just like a long strip of field and then an open field. And so, we've had a lot of displaced people back there. And originally, when it first started happening, quite a few of us would call Marion County and they would come and then they would check in with those people and they told us that they would patrol the area more because we were having some break-ins in some of our homes and people camping out back there and things. But then I must, I can't say why, maybe just because they're busy, but I'm assuming they probably just didn't want to drive down the road. But, you know, I have a feeling if the road was easier to access, that maybe we would get more patrol people down there. I think just, was it yesterday, Sean, that there was a lady lurking around in everyone's yard? And I don't know how long it took the guy to get there, but I think that's what he was referring to is, you know... But we used to have more people patrolling and now I think it's sort of a road people like to avoid is all.
Okay, that's important information, thanks Kathy. All right, Commissioners, I see me all have something to say.
I do, but why don't you go first? Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank everybody for coming here and bringing this to our attention. It's not that we didn't know it was an issue. It is a challenge for us and I think there are some potential longer-term solutions that we'll take a look at. Personally, I know I purchased a property in 1988 and we had a road that, and I think somebody said that they used to maintain their road and neighbors would get out there and we would do it Saturday mornings. We'd be filling gravel and raking and doing all that stuff. And I can't remember how many properties were on this road, but it's probably close to 30 properties on this road. And this would have been, we contacted the county commissioners and I know Brian's probably listening, our Public Works Director, right now. And at that time, we used to do a local, what we called a local improvement district. Jan, you probably remember that, an LID. And who's here from Public Works that could probably...
Oh, there's a hand in the back.
Yeah, and at the time, I remember, I think budgets, this was before, long before I was a Commissioner, budgets cut, but what that LID did was all our neighbors got together and agreed to pay for the improvements based on how far, we had to get, I think, 70% of the neighbors to agree upon to pay for this improvement of this road. And then the county adopted it into the road system and to this day maintains it. It's a road out south in the county where I live. So, there are solutions to that, but what it took was the neighbors to come together, like you are today, coming up with a solution that they all agreed upon. Because in this case, there was somebody who lived right on the front of the road and this was probably a half-mile-long road. And people on the other end didn't think, the people on the front didn't think they should pay as much as those on front or on the back of the road. And I was at the end of the road and we all just said, "Hey, look," whatever, it worked out. And we came up with a base amount that everybody would pay and then based on how far away you lived, you increased the amount you would pay. And the county came in, got the engineering done, got the project done. We all wrote a check or you could finance it, I think, over a 10-year period, Jan, at a certain, at 8% interest and make that payment every year. So, there are ways to do this. I know our Public Works Director has given some other ideas that we will take a look at. But there's a lot of roads like yours in East...
About $70 million worth of roads like yours?
The other thing I will say is that we understand that we are the governing body. We're your city council, basically, for East Salem. And a lot of the things that we've done over there, the previous sheriff, Jason Myers, and I worked for two or three years to get the Public Safety Service District in place so that there are 10 additional deputies that patrol both the north and the south areas. And the lighting that's going on over there and the improvements, but we know we have a long ways to go and a lot of people love living there because it's outside the city limits and your taxes, your tax base is cheaper than living in the city. And so, we're trying to make it a more livable community. And this today is another example of how we can listen to you and try to move that ball forward in some way. So, I want to thank you for being here and Madam Chair, I want to thank you for allowing me to share that story.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. First, you, Willis?
Yeah.
Would you, but would you provide a little bit of background as to why these roads are not...
That's, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Then I don't have to do it.
I wanted to jump in and also thank you all for being here. This is something that, this is the kind of government that we like is where we just get to work with folks on problems together. So, something I really appreciate. So, I think one of the things I wanted to address is I imagine, I'm in a similar situation where there's a road kind of two streets over from my house that's really in rough shape and it kind of, it bothers me. I'm in Staton, so it's not exactly the same. But it's a situation where the city has had it on its improvement list for 10 years, but it's never had the money to actually improve it. And so, it's a super frustrating situation. I think the situation with non-county roads, I just want to address because I could imagine if you say, "Well, wait a second, why is that a county road but my road's not?" It feels kind of unfair. And so, I just want to sort of talk a little bit about that because the way that we do roads in America is a little bit wonky in an organ and I didn't understand it until I was a Commissioner where we, you're right, we all pay property taxes. And it's like, "Why am I paying property taxes?" And they go to maintain county roads, but they don't maintain non-county roads. It's because that's not how we build roads, that's how we maintain roads. So, the way that we build roads is we basically tax developers. So, the way that it works is whoever developed your street, they kind of had a conversation with the county and the county at that time allowed them to not pay additional money to make it a county road. And the argument for that is that you get cheaper housing as a result. So, you know, when you're looking for like, we want affordable housing for people, but one of the things that makes housing unaffordable is if every tax has, if every house has a $20,000 or $30,000 tax to build a road to that house, all of a sudden that $20,000 or $30,000 just gets passed on to the home buyer and that house becomes $20,000 or $30,000 more. Sometimes it can be as high as $50,000 more or something, right? Because these roads are very expensive. And so, in the case of non-county roads, what happened was when the developer was developing your place, they basically said, "No, no, no, we, the homeowners, will maintain this road. You, the county, don't have to. In exchange, we won't pay that additional tax to build that road." So, the housing will be cheaper on the front end. The problem is now you're, whatever you are, 50, 60, 70 years later, most of the people living in that neighborhood, you guys weren't privy to that deal. You guys didn't make that deal, right? And so, you're in a situation where you're like, "Wait a second, why is that road a county road and mine's not? This was a deal that was made way before I moved into this neighborhood, you know, is that fair?" And I think that's where the problem is, somebody at some point paid some money to make a county road a county road and in cases, and like Commissioner Bethel said, we have lots of cases all across the county where people made this deal. They said, "No, we don't want you, the county, to maintain this road. We'll maintain it. In exchange, you guys won't charge us to build this road." And for some people, they still want that deal. They don't want us coming in and building their road and charging them money. They're like, "Ah, that's not what we want." And I think philosophically, kind of the way I think about this is, I don't like to impose things on the people that I represent. And this is why I like you guys here today, is I like the people I represent to come and tell me sort of, "This is our community, this is what we want to see for our community." And then we sort of work together on a solution. I think one of the challenges that we have internally as a county is that the way that the state sets up paying for roads is most of the money is matched. So, when we, we have a certain amount of money that we pay for roads, say, the best bang for our buck is to match it with a grant program from the state. So, the state will say, for instance, "We want to do bridges. You have a bunch of old bridges. If you spend your tax money on bridges, we'll match it at a 10-to-1 rate. So, we'll give you $10 for every $1 of your own money you put into fixing bridges." That's a really good deal. The problem is if they don't have a program for something like this, for non-county roads, then any dollar we use for non-county roads, there's a huge opportunity cost because we're basically leaving, you know, a bunch of money on the table. So, that's why a couple weeks ago, I went to our Public Works folks and I said, "Hey, you know, I'm concerned that there are these areas of the state that are, or areas of county that are continually under-invested and, you know, we don't have a solution for." And, you know, one of the things that I was told was, "Well, the problem is, it's hard for our department institutionally to say, 'We should leave millions of dollars in state money on the table to fix this.'" And what I said to them is, I said, "The problem is, is it's not acceptable to me that there are, there would be certain types of roads that would never get improved because the opportunity cost is too high, because we'd be leaving money on the table with the state." So, we have to come up with some hybrid. You know, I don't want a situation where we're basically impoverishing Marion County as a whole because the state has this grant dollar, this grant money out there and because we're not using our matching funds for that grant money, we get potentially tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars less from the state to support our county as a whole. On the other hand, I can't have a situation where we have certain types of roads that aren't prioritized by the state grant programs and then they perpetually never get improved. So, that's the situation that we're in from a, how do we, how do we best allocate the resources that we have? And so, I think that's, I think what we're gonna do is probably have a work session with you guys, bring you in and talk about what the solution is going forward for your road. I just want to give you some context of like, that's, those are some of the things that we have to think about as we're making this decision. So, that's why we, that's why we can't just tomorrow write a check and fix your road is because there are these other considerations that, it all has to work together in the whole for what's best for everybody in Marion County.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, there was a lot to unpack in that. I've only, so I've been a Commissioner for a year and transportation is the thing that got assigned to me and I'm actually really interested in it. So, for the last year, I've been spending a lot of time in the learning process to understand pretty much what Commissioner Willis just said, but also trying to figure out how we can improve our community, our county, without having to rely on the state or the feds. And so, in that work session that we will stand up, we have, you know, several of your email addresses. If you didn't put your email address on here, there's a couple that didn't and you want to be invited to that work session, we'll want you to give us that information. And we'll bring our Public Works team into the discussion and we can talk about options on how to move ahead. I think what's important for you to hear though is that you're important to us and that your road is important. And as I was listening to both of you talk and I heard Kathy talk about the potholes and the buses, so I think buses typically don't go down dead-end roads if there's no way to turn around. But maybe there's a Safe Routes to Schools program that we can encourage ODOT to partner with us on to improve that so that way your kiddos, it can expedite the funding process, if you will. There's ways to do it, we just have to be really creative. But I think what's important for me to say to you is that there's likely going to be a cost to you to do that. Who knows what that will look like, at least upfront. And I don't want people to enter into this to think that it would be otherwise because that's really just how I think these have to work, especially through the local improvement district process. So, I appreciate whoever spearheaded this and the discussion that's gonna be forthcoming. I hope that you all come. I didn't watch the YouTube video, but our Public Works team did go and do some Google aerial shots for us, so I was able to see some still images of it yesterday afternoon. When the first email came through, Brenda forwarded it to us. So, I have a general idea and of course, we'll take a field trip out so you may see us in your neighborhood in the near future so we can see it personally. But in the meantime, we will be in touch to schedule something and then we'll also follow up with an email so you know how to contact us directly. Commissioner, it looks like you have...
Yeah, Madam Chair, you whispered to me, schools, they're between Auburn and Four Corners Elementarys.
Perfect. That's actually good.
But I don't know how the Safe Routes to Schools works on a non-county road. That, you know, that's the challenge that we're gonna have is getting, is getting these things up. And our Public Works Director has already sent us, you know, four or five good ideas and we'll be in touch with you to try to figure out what works best for everybody because it's not just your street, it's others.
Yeah, in the information that we got from the Public Works Director, he's said that there's like an estimation of around $70 million worth of road work that needs to be done on non-county-owned roads. Yeah, you have to come up to the microphone though, which you seem to really like, I think.
All right, Mr. Speaker, you know, I was, I was, wait a second.
Yep.
Kathy, 250 Kenwood. I was, when I was referring to the buses, mostly referring to the smaller buses that are like Head Start.
Oh, sure.
Family Building Blocks.
Yeah, take out the door.
Yeah, they come down the road. But so in the morning, there's oftentimes this little huddle of children at the end of the road that, you know, normally they would get picked up in front of their house or, you know. So that's what I was referring to, not necessarily the big.
The big bus, okay.
The big buses.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Well, thank you again for coming. We'll be in touch. Oh, Commissioner.
Well, and just one thing to think about for our next meeting. I would, I would say one of the things that's important to me, and I know it's important to other Commissioners as well, is part of the reason people live in East Salem, New Marion, is because it's a little bit more affordable. The housing's more affordable, and the taxes are a couple thousand dollars less if you live on the Marion County side versus the Salem side, right? And right now, housing affordability is really hard. It's hard for people to afford to buy houses. And, and so it's something that I would say we are very conscious of as we make decisions for, for that area, is we understand that, you know, maybe when it was developed, it was more like a farming community, and now it's more like a urban community. So, but we still want to make sure that we're not pricing people out of that area, or that this is, this is a burden on the people who live there. So that's part of the reason why, like, when we did the public safety levy, or we did the lighting district levy, we went to the communities and sort of said, like, how much can you afford to pay? Do you want these services? How much can you afford to pay? Because we don't want to be a situation, and you see this in some cities, where it's like, look, the easiest thing for us to do is to charge you more than we need, because we know costs are going to go up over time, and that we don't have to worry about it. And we just put the burden on you, and if you can't afford it, you have to leave, right? And that's not the kind of government we are, that's not what we want to do. We want East Salem to be a place that ordinary people can live and raise their families and feel safe in, and afford to, to live there. So think of, if you could think about that as we meet, is what, what do you feel comfortable, what's the amount of money that your community can afford to pay for this sort of thing? What's the right level there, so that we're not pricing people out of that community?
Great. Okay. Well, thank you for coming. And now we'll move on to a proclamation under Health and Human Services to consider approval of a proclamation designated the month of March 2022 as National Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County. Michael Koehler, I probably didn't get that right, but you can help me out.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
And if you're comfortable taking your mask down for the microphone, that would be great. Thank you.
You got close. Michael Koehler. Thanks.
Koehler, is it, say it again.
Koehler.
Koehler. Yeah, I got that wrong for sure.
The only person who ever got it right was my high school Latin teacher, so don't feel bad.
Perfect.
Yeah. That's how I knew she knew what she was talking about. Okay, so my name again is Michael Koehler, and I am with Marion County's Problem Gambling Prevention Program. And I'm here to talk to you today about proclaiming March as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and joining the National Council on Problem Gambling in that proclamation as well. The goals for our program specifically for, for prevention with, I guess I should back up really quick. So with lottery funds, about 1% of those funds come to prevention and also for treatment of problem gambling. And I am representing the, the prevention arm of those funds specifically to our county. There's also treatment as well, which is bridgeway within Marion County. And for prevention, we look to try and prevent specifically problem gambling and to encourage responsible gambling, so that way we have less people developing a problem with gambling. And then also reducing youth gambling as well. So just for awareness purposes, I just want to go over what problem gambling is. Problem gambling is a continuation of gambling activities despite negative personal, social, or financial consequences. And the, some of the, some of those signs of what problem gambling looks like is listed on the right. So that would be being preoccupied with gambling, hiding or lying, the gambling activities, chasing losses with more gambling, meaning trying to win back something that was lost, restlessness or irritability when not gambling, repeating unsuccessful attempts to stop, borrowing money to gamble, gambling to escape problems, increasing bets, and jeopardizing relationships and job opportunities. So obviously, things that we want to try and prevent with people who choose to gamble. And gambling disorder as defined by the American Psychiatric Association is, four or more of these criteria are met, and this can be diagnosed as a gambling disorder. However, we also want to acknowledge that people are at risk, can be at risk of developing a gambling disorder. And that would mean that maybe one, two, three of these criteria could be met. The Oregon Council on Problem Gambling, made up of the state's prevention and also treatment, as well as nonprofits such as the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association, they, the Oregon Council on Problem Gambling had done a study. And the information from that study tells us that there's an estimated 2.6% of Oregon adults who would qualify for a gambling disorder if they sought treatment, and that another 5.4 are at risk of potentially developing a problem. Now, the gambling disorder, specifically that 2.6%, that's roughly about a little over 80,000 Oregon adults. To put that into perspective, that would be enough to fill the Moda Center where the Trail Blazers play four times. So just to give an idea of what that looks like. Some of the concerns for problem gambling would be, one of the reasons why we have a program specifically to prevent it in health is that it can cause some other health issues that we're obviously want to, want to try and prevent. A recent study from the Oregon Council on Problem Gambling and Oregon Problem Gambling Services found that those who were impacted by COVID-19, that those who, who in this survey test were positive for problem gambling behaviors, had higher rates of problem alcohol use, problem gaming, because this survey specifically looked at video games too, and also problem cannabis use as well. This also reflects what we see in treatment as well. We see higher rates of other co-occurring issues that obviously we want to try and prevent.
I'm sorry, what does COVID-19 have to do with these things?
So the, the Oregon Council on Problem Gambling, they did a impact study from the stressors of COVID-19. And they looked at a year before the pandemic and a year into the pandemic. And the, due to, let's say, high stress from, from the pandemic, they found that those who did have high stress had higher rates of problem gambling and also higher rates of, let's say, problem alcohol use and problem cannabis use as well.
So in that study, and maybe you can't answer this, but is it possible that everybody who was laid off because the governor made people go home, they had more time on their hands to do these things?
Yeah, I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Okay. It's fine. It's an interesting fact, I guess. Go ahead.
Oh, let me backtrack here. So some of the other individual concerns would be the people who had, who went to treatment for problem gambling also had higher rates of a mental health episode, as well as suicidal ideation compared to those who are not in treatment for problem gambling. There's also the effect on families. Problem gambling does negatively affect families. And for families that have problem gambling, relative or something like that, it increases the likelihood that children in a family that has someone who has experienced problem gambling will develop problem gambling as well. Just increases those rates. And concerns in our community as well. There's, the Oregon Problem Gambling Services estimates that over $50 million in costs to Oregon are caused by problem gambling as hidden costs. And those would be higher rates of bankruptcy, loss of relationships, criminal activity, loss of productivity in the workforce, and other mental health and addiction problems. There is hope and there is help in the state of Oregon. It is free and it is confidential. You can call 1-877-MY-LIMIT or go to opgr.org. And this resource is for people experiencing problem gambling, but there are correlations with problem gaming as well. So because they have the capacity to do so, they're also able to help those experiencing problem gaming as well. It's also for families as well and friends of people who gamble. And there are resources in Spanish as well. People who want to access Spanish-specific services can call 1-844-TUVALIS. But there's also Spanish resources on the website as well. Just a few things I wanted to point out regarding our Problem Gambling Prevention Program itself. We've been investing time into providing education to our youth. We've developed a problem gambling integration toolkit for middle school health classes. And we've also participated in the ILEAD Youth Leadership Summit to try and break down some of those risk factors for developing problem gambling, but other types of risky behaviors too. We also have presented to different neighborhood groups, coalitions, business leaders, and the Capital Community Media. We were also featured on Insight, which is a program through, through them. And we've also done outreach. We've received many grants to do targeted ads. We've had a billboard, radio interviews, and also, again, with Capital Community Media. And because of some of the successes we've had from our Problem Gambling Prevention Program, we've increased our funding by $50,000 for Marion County's Problem Gambling Prevention Program as well. Some of the objectives that we're looking to, to incorporate this year is to, again, build resiliency among our youth and increase adoption of our education toolkit, toolkit. To also assess what the needs are for our Spanish speakers. Marion County does have a lot of Spanish speakers in our communities, so we want to try and increase outreach and see how we can do that best with some of our, some of our community-based organizations. Older adults as well, provide technical assistance to retirement communities. And then if there's any businesses that are interested, providing technical, technical assistance to them as well. So I want to thank you for the consideration for Problem Gambling Awareness Month being recognized locally here. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have.
So do you do any, like, in the community outreach at events? So I noticed on your last slide with some of the images, that one photo of those beautiful women is from Woodburne from their festival. Do you go there and have a booth and talk about the things that you do?
Yeah, we've connected, especially pre-pandemic, we had connected with different, different events. We've done tabling at events, and we have also developed a banner just with kind of some of those signs and symptoms that I talked about. Again, to really encourage, you know, the responsible side of gambling. Our program's not telling people what to do. It's really just trying to help those who might be experiencing any type of problem itself.
Okay. Any questions? Great. Would you start off the proclamation then?
Yes. Do we need to make a motion?
Probably.
Motion first. Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designated the month of March 2022 as National Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes.
Okay. And the matter of proclaiming the month of March 2022 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on March 2nd, 2022. Whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling and the state of Oregon have designated March 2022 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. And whereas the health of Marion County residents is of utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole, and?
Whereas problem gambling is a public health concern impacting an estimated 21,000 Marion County residents of all ages and backgrounds in all communities, and has significant personal, social, health, and financial repercussions. And whereas, an estimated 6,800 adults in Marion County meet the clinical diagnosis for a gambling disorder, but less than 1% of the aforementioned adults being connected to gambling addiction treatment. And?
Whereas thousands of Oregonians have successfully sought treatment for problem gambling, and they and their families have benefited from the expertise of dedicated treatment professionals. And whereas, Marion County is dedicated to reducing the negative effects of gambling for all Marion County residents through balanced policies and effective systems of problem gambling services such as targeted prevention programs and treatment services. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of March 2022 is Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County, dated in Salem, Oregon, the second day of March 2022.
All right.
Sorry.
Michael, it's good to see you. I, I don't know that I've seen you since way back when we were getting help for the, the farm people in the middle, at the beginning of the pandemic.
Yeah.
I remember Commissioner, wasn't even a commissioner at that time.
I was not a commissioner at that time.
A regular person.
And we all, we all started working on trying to help get them equipment and all that kind of stuff. And it's good to see you. Thank you for your service, especially during the, the pandemic and now this. And I, I know that, I, I just look at the amount of money that goes into this versus how much money goes into the lottery, and it's, it's pale. We, we certainly need to do more to help people change their lives in this way. So thank you for your service in doing this.
Thank you.
I love how he's so polite about our interaction. I called him on the phone one day and was really mad and said, we need to do something for these farmers and these ag workers. What do we do? And he was like, I have no idea. Let's figure it out. He brought all the people to the table and they all figured it out. They had to do cherries. That was what it started.
There's a proclamation for it.
Did you know that ag workers for, for cherries are paid by the pick, or the pound, not versus the hour? I learned a lot in the pandemic about agriculture and the challenges that they face in general, but the impacts that they were facing from COVID. Marion County is a great team that showed up, by the way.
I will say it was an honor working on that work. It was a different capacity for me, but it was, it was really fun to connect with a lot of those new, new partners and really to connect them to resources as quickly as possible, especially when they needed it most. So thanks again.
Thank you for doing so. Have a good day. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Commissioner Cameron, if you would, read it, please.
Sure, Madam Chair. Let's see. What do I have here? This is a little bit, it says revised.
The title is changed, is all.
Okay, so under Board of Commissioners, Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee. Is that right? Okay. Consider approval of an order reappointing Sandy Butler to the Marion County Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee, and with a term ending January 31st, 2026. Under OLCC licenses, recommend approval of an order recommending, geez. Okay, approve an order recommending renewal of the Oregon Liquor Control Commission licenses.
What?
Which ones?
Yeah, wait a second.
I better open up.
That doesn't say, right?
Yeah, there's something wrong here. Let me get the board session.
There's what? So we're not, we don't have to read them into the record?
No, they're on.
There's a lot of them, all right.
Exhibit A of the.
There we go. There we go. I got it. OLCC favorable renewals 2022. OLCC favorable renewals 2022 under Exhibit A. So approve an order recommending renewal of the Oregon Liquor Commission licenses under Exhibit A, OLCC favorable renewals for 2022. And then, under the Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forestry timber revenue in the amount of $530,176.91 per ORS Chapter 3530. I think I got that kind of, kind of right.
It was a little, this was a little funky today on the, on the layout.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, if I may. Sorry for the, stumbling through the consent calendar. However, under the Treasurer's Office, I just want to point out, and we had a Forest Trust Council meeting a couple weeks ago, and Commissioner Yamamoto from Tillamook was presenting to the Oregon State Forestry Board members on how this money is distributed that we get, and most of it goes to, as we know, education and goes to all these taxing properties. And, and the chair of the board said, "Well, why doesn't the county keep it?" So the chair of the Oregon State Forestry Board doesn't understand how forestry taxes, forestry revenues are distributed. We, we can't, based on this statute, ORS Chapter 530, it gets distributed amongst the taxing districts as property taxes. And so, so people understand that, that these were, these were county lands that were given to the state in trust, and instead of taxes, the revenues from these state forests are supposed to come back as property taxes would. And then those property taxes are distributed as the same as citizens were, we're talking about their property taxes. It don't go to roads, but it goes to all the, the different entities that, you know, education and the cities and all those things that, that, that we distribute to. So I just wanted to make sure if anybody was listening, that $530,000 that we are getting, it's, it's getting distributed amongst many taxing districts. And it's, I'm glad that the forestry board was educated that day.
I was gonna say, I, I, I hope, you educated us. I hope you educated the head of the Oregon Forestry Department.
I bet the people on the call educated him immediately. I have this hunch.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just listening. I didn't get to, I didn't, but Commissioner Yamamoto was, was, said, "We can't keep them." It's not the way it works.
He's from Tillamook County, for those that don't know, and their revenues are dependent on timber.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to action items. Our first action item is under Business Services. Terry Stoner and Wesley Miller are going to join us to consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services, the Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc., to add $224,720 for a new contract total of $6,104,700 for the upgrade of access controls, interior doors, and exterior doors at the Marion County Jail through December 31, 2023. Who's going to go first?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Terry Stoner, Marion County Facilities Manager. Just a little background here, we have two capital improvement projects that have been approved. One is for the security system at the jail, and the other one was for exterior doors at the jail. After looking through all this, we have come to the conclusion that they really kind of mesh and should be combined. So that's what we're here to ask for, is approval to combine the two capital improvement projects into one, and that way we can work them together.
So I just happened to like flip this open. So is it, and I opened it to a page that says juvenile. So is some work being done at the juvenile department?
Yeah, the security, the security project is for the jail, the transition center, and the juvenile department, so.
Great.
When do you expect it will be completed?
That's a good question, Wes.
I can take that over. For the record, Wesley Miller, Marion County Construction Project Coordinator, good morning. To answer your question, completion date is, again, as you've heard us speak of, is materials lead times. We're projecting the end of 2023 calendar year as a whole for the three buildings and all the scope involved in it. Specifically today is getting approval to amend that contract for Stanley for these additional extra doors, and also being a design-built project, we have an initial design, and as we go, we see unforeseen and different designs that make more sense for the county for the long run, that we're not, kind of like, different things throughout the county. We want to make sure the totality of the project is for the long run. I'm looking 20, 30 years down the road, so.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner? All right, I'll take a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions Incorporated to add $224,720 for a new contract total of $6,104,700 for the upgrade of access controls, interior doors, and exterior doors at the Marion County Jail through December 31, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Public Works, where Scott Wilson is going to join us to consider approval of the purchase order with own equipment company in the amount of $320,250.35 for the purchase of one Elgin Broom Bear Sweeper utilizing the Cooperative Sourcewell Contract 093021-ELG. That's cool. Kevin might want to drive this one.
You always get to buy the coolest stuff.
Commissioner Cameron might want to drive this one.
I thought I'd bring a photo so I could have you guys argue about that. Good morning, commissioners.
You broke in first.
Yeah, yeah.
For the record, my name is Scott Wilson, Operations Division Manager for Marion County Public Works. Today I'm here to ask approval for PO number 901970 for the purchase of the 2022 Elgin Broom Bear Street Sweeper. As you know, Public Works utilizes a diversified fleet of heavy and medium equipment types to perform its road maintenance task. This sweeper will be utilized throughout the year and remove debris from the roads during our fall leaf season, sanding material during the winter, and asphalt millings and chip seal aggregates from pavement maintenance activities during the spring and summer months. For the fiscal year 2021 and 2022, the PO amount for the street sweeper is $320,250.35 and was awarded through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Group Contract Number 093021-ELG. Funding has already been pre-approved by CE number 22-412 for our existing 2022 sweeper. This purchase is essential to replace equipment that has surpassed its useful life and we're replacing our existing 2002 street sweeper. Options to consider is to approve the purchase order to own equipment company for the purchase of this new Elgin Broom Bear Sweeper or withhold approval. Public Works recommends that the board approves Option One and approve PO number 901970 to own equipment company for the purchase of a new Elgin Street Sweeper.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions or comments, commissioners?
No, it looks very nice.
I'm ready. Schedule it, let's get it right along.
How long from today's approval will it take for it to arrive?
From what I understand, we're looking at about 12 months.
Wow, okay.
Well, maybe I'll still be breathing.
Yeah, there, there was some, we looked at, there, there may be some available chassis available that might help speed up the process, but we, we're in dire need to replace it with our old sweeper, so.
Okay.
The sooner, the better.
If not, they can just sweep me up. All right, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a purchase order with own equipment company in the amount of $320,250.35 for the purchase of one Elgin Broom Bear Sweeper utilizing the Cooperative Sourcewell Contract 093021-ELG.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. All right, we move on to read the calendar, and I will do it while Commissioner Willis signs the contracts. So today is March 2, Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. We're here for board session in the Senator Hearing Room, First Floor, 555 Court Street. And then at noon today, we're driving up to Butteville General Store at 10767 Butte Street Northeast, and it's an Aurora address, but it's not really an Aurora. And that's for our city's county meeting. We hope folks will join us there. And then tomorrow, Thursday, the 3rd, at 7:00 a.m., we have a Salem Chamber Public Policy Committee meeting, which is virtual. And then tomorrow, 1:30, we have a work session regarding our CDBG Home Program Annual Action Plan in the Commissioner's Boardroom, Fifth Floor, 555 Court Street. And then on Tuesday, March 8th, we have Management Update, Commissioner's Boardroom, Fifth Floor, 555 Court Street. And on Tuesday, the 8th, at 12, we have another city's Marion County meeting at the Wooden Nickel at 108 North Center Street in Sublimity. And then Wednesday, the 9th, at 9, we have board session in the Senator Hearing Room, right here, First Floor, 555 Court Street. And then I'm super excited to be heading over on the 9th, Wednesday, at 11:30 a.m., this says PM, but a.m., for our 2022 State of the County presentation to the Salem, at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast, and that is being held in person, so if you haven't got your tickets, go online and do so. And then that same day, Wednesday, at 1:30, we have a scheduled BOC CAO meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 1926602ABDEFHI on the Fifth Floor, 555 Court Street Northeast. This is a very short calendar. But I'm excited to get out in the community. You know what I'm really excited for today? Is that Jessica handed out yesterday the menu. I thought it was like an ice cream truck coming to visit us, but it's really like an ice cream store that has some sandwiches, but I'm excited about the ice cream. There was some really great options on that menu.
You, you have some for me, because I'm going to be working on a park trail.
There you go.
Okay, I will.
I wish I could go. But we, I've postponed this meeting, I don't know, a couple of times, so.
On, on a what?
This is the San Yum Trail, the San Yum River Trail.
Oh, good for you.
Preliminary discussions of turning that old rail line into a bike walk path.
Good for you. That will be very exciting. You know, we, yesterday had a-
I'll keep you posted, yeah.
Had a discussion about appointing Hersh Sangster to the Parks Commission, and he is a bike guy, so he will be very excited to see this project come forward. I'm certain he will engage.
I'm sure he'll be excited about it. Well, it's good to be out and about again, and good to see people's faces again.
I agree. I actually am really looking forward to the State of the County. Last year it was a little odd, because, you know, we had, we basically drug all of our staff into this room, so that way we had an audience to speak to, even though we were looking at the camera. This year we get to talk to hundreds of faces in person, so get ready, because I got something to say.
Right.
It's gonna happen then.
Really, that's not like you.
No way. It's been a great year. I have lots to share.
It has been.
My perspective is different, so.
Great.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned, have a great day.